Ending order, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, July twenty-three, two thousand nineteen. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Schelka? White? Little?
Here. Uh, would you please join us in a moment of silence? Okay. Join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one is agenda received, is proposed or amended. We do have fourteen A and B, A and B. That we won't be taking any action on those two items today.
I'll move to approve the agenda striking of fourteen A and B.
Second?
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two is public comments. Anybody like to speak to the board this time is not a agenda item. Please come up to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Norman Primer, five-eight-three-two, Second Street, Dewar, Iowa. And I'd like to make a comment on the odor from the grain elevator where they had all that rotten corn. They've moved the rotten corn out, but the smell is just horrendous. And it's not healthy on the people that sit in there in the area. So, maybe they could check into that. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item three, uh, claims and payments, resolution A.
The claims are a total of one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ten dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, that includes a number of substantial payments. Uh, the, uh, monthly services for NAF Care at the jail of a hundred and four thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. There is a crane purchased by Secondary Roads for three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And, uh, the Raycom radio maintenance for fiscal twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
Move to approve.
Second?
Any questions or comments for the resolution? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Do we have anything under country view?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item four, we have a presentation. This is an update on recent legislative sessions related to property taxes, mental health, elections presented by the Iowa State Association of Counties. Good morning. For the public, why don't you state your name again?
Uh, good morning. I'm, uh, Jamie Cashman with the, I'm the government relations manager with the Iowa State Association of Counties. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, uh, certainly appreciate the opportunity, uh, to come before you today, uh, to talk about things, uh, that happened this previous legislative session and to seek input and talk about things and moving into the twenty-twenty legislative session. Uh, we certainly, uh, work closely, uh, with, uh, the Urban County Coalition, uh, and things, uh, that have come before the General Assembly, uh, but also too, you know, for ISAC, we represent you and then also too, uh, we're contracted by the Iowa State Association of County Supervisors, uh, to work on your behalf. So I know you're very well aware of some of the things that are, have already happened, uh, from the session. Certainly, mental health and disability services again was a priority. Uh, we're very pleased that we made some progress in, uh, adjusting those carry-forward balance restrictions, uh, to forty percent and then also extending, uh, to when, uh, that would be implemented, uh, to fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, we were, uh, disappointed though that nothing was done in terms of addressing the mental health levy. Uh, while we saw, uh, legislation, uh, that we certainly support, uh, services of, for children, uh, but the state needs to give us and the legislature needs to give us the resources, uh, to provide those services. And unfortunately, uh, they did not make, uh, any adjustments to that levy. So obviously, uh, this will be a priority, uh, moving forward. So if the, uh, state wants us to provide like they did, or they asked us to provide those services, uh, a couple of years ago in terms of complex needs, uh, services in many of the counties and certainly your mental health region is moving forward in terms of the access centers and so forth, uh, to have a, a long-term, a sustainable, a funding solution to provide those services, uh, is needed, uh, more than ever. Uh, next was on, uh, the Iowa, Iowa Water and Land Legacy. Unfortunately, nothing was done, uh, to address this. Uh, certainly, uh, this is extremely important, uh, especially, uh, because of your county and how you've embraced, uh, just the outdoor recreational needs and trails, uh, all and up the Cedar Valley. And so if we could finally, uh, you know, certainly raise, uh, the sales tax, uh, some have talked to raise it all the way up to a penny and provide some other services as a result of that, that would be great. But we first and foremost need to, uh, fund, uh, the trust fund and that first three eights would go towards that. The other thing too, and I know you guys have been a great, uh, benefit of, is because of REAP and that would fully fund REAP at, at twenty million dollars. And last of, of ISAC's priorities, uh, from this previous session, uh, was on, uh, on taxes and obviously, uh, funding the backfill, uh, was certainly, uh, something, uh, that we were very pleased the governor put it in our budget and the legislature followed through on their, uh, commitment, uh, to, to do so. So obviously, uh, this has been threatened in the last, uh, previous years and so we certainly, uh, need to be vigilant and talking to our legislators about how important this is and how important it is to our, our counties and our, our communities to make sure they, they're keep their promise. Every session that goes by, we have new legislators that, uh, weren't around when they actually passed, uh, commercial industrial property tax, uh, bill. And so obviously, there's an education effort that needs to, uh, be maintained. And so, uh, now, well, the other, uh, thing, major piece of legislation that came up that I know you're well aware of is the, the property tax, uh, transparency bill or whatever you want to call it. Uh, certainly, uh, you know, obviously, there'll be some changes in terms of if you want to go above, you know, a hundred and two percent, you'll need a, a two-thirds vote, obviously. In your case, you'll need four votes, uh, to do that moving forward extends, you know, the filing of the budgets from March fifteenth of that deadline to March thirtieth. So I think it's just more of a case of, you know, acquiring an extra public hearing and, and doing that. I know you guys do that. You're very, you know, open and transparent, so this is just another thing that the legislature is requiring on it. I'll just let you know, as a result of that legislation, on October second, uh, in Ames, we will be hosting a budget and, uh, property tax seminar to talk about, you know, best practices and some of the things that are going on. It's at the Gateway Conference Center, uh, in Ames, Iowa, uh, that we'll be having some panel discussions. There'll be some supervisors and county auditors and, and some other folks, experts that'll be there to talk about this, uh, going into the next budget year. Uh, so with that, I'll just open it up to any questions that you might have.
Okay, board, anything from the board first? Chris?
I mean, this, uh, legislative session was certainly, uh, a mess as the past number of, as they all have been since I've been serving. And so I, I just want to say I really appreciate the work that, that ISAC does on our behalf and, um, we'd really be lost without your voice and without the Urban County Coalition, so.
Well, thank you supervisor.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of that information comes at us very fast, comes at you very quickly too. So appreciate when you disseminate that to us as quickly as you do, so thank you.
Thank you as well.
What are you thinking or seeing, I guess, for next year? You mentioned, obviously, we'd be looking for the levy, the mental health, our funding for the mental health needs, but are there other things that you maybe think or are seeing that?
I think what, you know, if we've traveled throughout the state as a result of the flooding and severe weather that we've had, obviously additional resources for county roads, uh, certainly, uh, going to be important. So that as we've traveled, that, that's going to be certainly one thing. Obviously, Iowa again, since they haven't done that. I really think, you know, knock on wood, uh, that they'll try to get done early this year because it's an election year. I think if anything, you know, if they'll look at, I doubt they'll look at property taxes again, uh, you know, that they, uh, obviously they'll say they addressed it, you know, with the bill that they passed, uh, this past year. I think if anything, there might be some things in terms of income, um, income tax, uh, changes that, that they, they might look at, you know, going into the election year, uh, but other than that, I think they're hopefully trying to get done early this year.
I know a hot topic amongst counties across the country is, is criminal justice reform.
Uh-huh.
I'm wondering if you're sensing, uh, any appetite in this current legislature to, um, tackle something meaningful that would have a big impact both on, on local budgets but also, um, in terms of outcomes from our criminal justice system?
Yeah. I know there's been some things, uh, that the Chief Justice has put forward in terms of some of these other courts, uh, you know, the vets courts and some of these other family courts to kind of, uh, cut back on, in terms of providing some different reforms. I'm sure there's some things that he's going to be putting forward again this year. I know there's been an appetite before that they had put some things forward that for some reason didn't make it through, uh, ultimately passed the second funnel and so forth. So, yeah, I think there'll be some things that'll come up again this year.
Jamie, you mentioned to being diligent regarding the rebate for the commercial industrial.
Mm-hmm.
I, I assume we're going to have to do that forever, I mean, until they yank it from us, but.
Amen.
Okay.
Yep.
Just let that remain on the forefront.
Yeah.
No, the biggest thing is if they're ultimately going to do that, uh, we want to be at, certainly be at the table
and if they do do it, spread it out, uh, as long as possible to, you know, lessen the impact on, on local government.
Sure, 'cause that's a million dollars, does always.
It's huge.
We consider every time budget comes up, so.
Oh, big time.
Thank you.
Rita, uh, do you have anything for your office?
Oh, um, the legislative group is going to meet at ten o'clock on conference call today.
Okay.
Issues that the treasures have, um, but, um, there's kind of different issues of which we've spoken about today. So we'll see what we're going to move forward with ISAC at that point.
Very good.
Sheriff, did you have anything?
We met last week and we will engage Jamie, uh, every week before session. We work very closely with ISAC, so.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Mike, um, conservation, anything you want to?
Obviously, uh, Iowa is so important to us and, uh, as is all across the state. And, uh, as we get ready for the football conference here, uh, CCDA has been discussing, you know, what, what we're looking at as far as, uh, addressing, uh, towards the legislature this year. But, but Iowa's at the top of the list. I mean, you know, the sunsets coming on REAP and, um, that's going to be a, that's a dagger to us if, if, if there's nothing to replace that. And so, uh, we'll push hard again. We, we develop new strategy each and every year and we're working on it again, so we'll be discussing that in August, so.
Very good. Kathy, the engineer?
Uh, yeah, we're of course concerned about the last two legislative sessions with the eighty-three cent specialty loads being allowed on bridges, uh, twenty-eighteen, the construction vehicles. That's what's happening with the undergrounds and some recent sessions of the rock, where three products being allowed on, uh, primary road routes. So just like continuing the fact, uh, allowance of heavier load on bridges.
Oh, we understand that's a huge issue and we'll continue to fight that.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Deb, anything, HR, Kim, IT? Is there anybody else get any questions for them?
I have one and I wonder, uh, uh, if there's been any discussion amongst the counties, uh, for municipalities that decide to use traffic cameras within a county, is there any discussion amongst the counties to regulate and tax the usage of?
Uh, there really hasn't. I know that there has been, you know, it seems like that, uh, Pope County has been one that they've, they've looked at it, but I haven't heard of anything, you know, of other counties looking at it as well.
Cause I'm, uh, they're utilized here in Black Hawk County, it might be a, a source revenue stream, and I'll use that word for the county.
Yep. Well, certainly, uh, you know, uh, as we've talked about with the backfill, uh, obviously, if, if they're looking at doing that, obviously, we'll be looking at additional revenue streams to offset that, that loss.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anybody else get any questions? I understand you're going to take a tour later on today.
Yeah, and then, uh, if there are no more questions, I'll turn it to our executive director, Bill Peterson, for some other things.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Uh, so just for the record, uh, Bill Peterson, executive director, the association. Um, so on the traffic cams, um, and those are, uh, regulated probably under the cities, uh, they would claim that as a home rule authority for their actions. So, uh, I, I don't suppose there would be any prohibition from counties putting them on county roads in some specific spots, but, uh, I don't think the cities would like us encroaching on their, um, home rule authority. Um, and, uh, just sort of to, uh, maybe I want to address this issue of local control and home rule authority. So, um, one of the things that, that we have been talking about is, uh, changing the terminology to make it, I think, clear to the citizens within our communities. And so instead of talking about local control or home rule authority, which, uh, maybe the average citizen wouldn't, uh, understand the implications of that, uh, we're talking, I think what we want to change the dialogue is talking about state interference with local decision-making. Uh, because in, uh, many cases, that's what's happening is that you're seeing issues like the road issues and other things where there typically have been local decisions made to meet the, uh, situation that exists within your communities and within your county. Uh, the state is, uh, finding it very convenient to step in to those, uh, areas and try and get control of those decisions at the state level. And so, uh, it's not, uh, I wouldn't say that it is, uh, state legislators sitting up there thinking about this, but there are, uh, interest groups out there that have, uh, a desire to limit the decision-making of local governments because it's a lot easier to go in and get a policy statewide that they have to deal with than having to deal with all of you ninety-nine counties or nine-hundred-and-fifty municipalities. Uh, so I, I think, uh, using the right language to talk about those things to help citizens make sure that, uh, it is really their, uh, authority that's being encroached upon, uh, and their authority of to have you as your local decision-makers make decisions on their behalf. Uh, it's heading us in, I think, in the wrong direction in the state. Um, so I just wanted to thank you, uh, first of all, for being a member of the Association of Counties. Uh, thank you very much for sharing Grant Vider with us, has been serving on the ISAC Board of Directors, uh, for many years. First as the auditor's representative, but now, uh, he's, uh, filling a, uh, position, uh, because of his role on the National Association of Counties Board. And I will say that, uh, he's very well respected and, uh, he brings a lot of benefit to our organization. So, uh, thanks for sharing him, uh, with us. Uh, for supervisors specifically, I did bring along some items that I wanted to call to your attention, uh, regarding our annual conference, uh, and that is the agenda for the County Supervisors Association. Um, and, uh, I think one thing that I wanted to highlight was, uh, on Friday morning, um, we will, uh, be having a congressional discussion, uh, so Congresswoman, uh, Finkenhour and Congressman King, and we're still hoping for maybe a commitment from, uh, maybe, uh, Congresswoman Axny or maybe even Senator Grassley that they would agree to show up, uh, to have a sort of a, uh, informal discussion with our members about issues that, uh, are important at the federal level and how, uh, we can work more closely with those individuals to, uh, sort of accomplish things at the federal level that benefit, uh, the state of Iowa. Uh, the, the second, uh, thing that we've been spent quite a bit of time on in the last year is this flyer on the, the flood track. And this will be actually an educational session that will be a component of our annual conference. And the first day, we have, uh, generally, uh, educational programming, but we've worked with the Iowa Flood Center, uh, for the last year of trying to put together ideas on how we can, uh, better inform our members about the resources that the Flood Center has available to, uh, local governments to, uh, manage these ever-increasing number of flooding events that we've had in the state, uh, but also, uh, provide an opportunity for people to make contacts and hear about actions that have been taken by other local governments, uh, in dealing with specific, uh, flood-related issues. And, you know, certainly, we keep seeing these, uh, what I call a sort of, uh, cata, uh, catastrophic rain events where you get, uh, nine to fifteen inches of rain dumped in a specific, uh, area of the state and, uh, you know, sometimes it's close to a river, sometimes it's not close to a river, but, um, water seems to be, uh, becoming more and more of a problem here of us in the state. And, uh, I think the Iowa Flood Center has some resources that supervisors, and we're also hoping that, uh, conservation and engineers, uh, possibly sheriffs, uh, planning and zoning would be interested in this information. So, uh, no extra cost as part of, just part of our regular conference, uh, event, uh, coming up in August. And with that, I won't, uh, take any more ti, uh, of your time, but I'd be happy to answer any question about anything the association does, any of our policies, how we arrive at them, uh, but.
Board, any questions?
No, I think I, I like the new, uh, terminology of interference, uh, with local decisions. You could also go with sabotage, meddling or obstruction, but I like.
Well, you know, words have meaning and we, uh, we want to get our point across, but, uh, you know, not go too far, so. We like to stay sort of in the middle of the road, uh, organizationally, since, you know, our members are of both political parties, uh, a, a broad spectrum of, uh, of views, uh, so we have to work hard to sort of bring everybody together to get consensus to get things done. So, uh, we don't want to be too radical.
I doubt they'll like state interference too well, like there were.
Uh, well, I'm sorry, but, uh, you gotta.
It is.
It is what it is. And, um, you know, we've seen just over the years, uh, just a number of issues where, uh, the state has stepped in and, and made decisions that things should be done a specific way where, uh, in actuality, um, uh, there's a lot of variations in this state, uh, from northwest to southeast and northeast to southwest and, uh, changing political views, changing, uh, community standards. And there is no specifically one right answer for any one of those, except the right answer for the community, the, of the people that live in that community. So, uh, I think that's what our interest in is preserving that right for people to make decisions on things that are important to their community, but, uh, may not have national implications or even statewide implications, so.
Well, again, we're on a rate, at a rate, I guess, appreciate your services to us as a county, so.
Is there anybody else? Got any questions? Okay, we thank you very much.
Okay, sure, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay. Moving on to item five on the agenda is receive project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning Kathy.
Good morning, Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Could I please have the TVs on? I wanted to, uh, highlight a recent, um, example of, of, uh, the changeable message boards that we purchased last year. Uh, I think this is a good success story for those, uh, message boards. Uh, earlier this spring, we had, I believe some of you had received some, some complaints about an event that was going out on Cedar Wapsie Road and Waverly Road. If you're familiar with that intersection, that's where the Iowa Trap Shooting Association, I believe that's where their headquarters, their main facility is. And in April, they, either April or May, they hosted the high school state meet and, uh, the traffic was parked up on both sides of Cedar Wapsie Road, um, pretty much from Waverly Road all the way to Ford Road and it made for very hazardous conditions. People were entering and exiting their cars, walking across the road and, uh, one of the neighbors in particular, the Hessis, they, I believe they called one of you at least and voiced their concern and they offered to work with us on a solution. So we, uh, worked with the Hessis and also Power Pavers, which is a company on the, the northeast side of that intersection to find some art, alternate parking areas. Uh, we, we spoke with the sheriff, worked with, closely with the sheriff and we placed, uh, the no parking signs on, along Cedar Wapsie Road and here's a photo of, of, during the event, the, the signs are placed and you can see that there are no cars parked along Cedar Wapsie Road. Uh, this is looking, uh, westbound, so we're almost at the intersection of Cedar Wapsie and Waverly Road. You can see, uh, still, there's no traffic parked along, uh, the sides of the road. You can see on the, uh, south side of the road there, that should say south side of the road, that's the Hesse property that they allowed us to have that overflow parking go into. We placed message board, a message board at the entrance to the driveway telling people that they should park in that field. And then here is the other message board placed in the Power Pavers property. Unfortunately, this side of the road didn't get much use. Um, we'll work with, um, the Power Paver people or work with the Iowa Trap Shooting Association to find out if, if that's really needed, that other location's needed or, um, but I feel it's been, that was a pretty successful application of using those signs. Uh, we've worked very closely with the sheriff to get the signs out and about the county over the last three or four months. We're using them primarily for, uh, pro, event, so, event, uh, notifications as well as pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. Um, we are collecting speed data when the signs are active, they can collect data. And can I answer any questions about the signs?
Well, Sheriff, this event's been going on for as long as I can remember. Has it always been a problem every year? I mean, thirty years ago, they were out there, we're holding these tournaments.
So the problem is that, uh, you can park or stand a vehicle for up to twenty-four hours as long as it's off that, that white fog line. And so there's no enforcement really, and yeah, it's a, it's a problem. Uh, we've never had an issue. Uh, in fact, we had an accident on Saturday that was not related to parking, which was, was related to stupid driving. But, um, it was, uh, it was very refreshing this year to see, and every shift of, uh, deputy was up there to make sure that these signs were effective. And, uh, this year, we had far less concern and far less issue.
But in the past, have they've always parked on this side there?
They have.
Have they?
Yeah, and it, it does, it narrows it down to damn near one, one lane.
Cause that's usually a, a fairly large event.
It's huge.
They just had one recently, did they?
They did the, they did the state high school trap meet and then this is their second largest event with the state, uh, seniors trap meet. And, uh, yeah, those two events are definitely concerning for us. But, uh, I think we found a rubric with, uh, the way Kathy placed it and the, the agreements that she worked out with those two companies or two, uh, two locations for parking, um, certainly made that congestion next to nothing.
What, the event lasts what?
Uh, it started on Tuesday and ran through Sunday.
So it's about a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it was fantastic. And the fact that it's, I will say covertly, collecting data for us, we're using that data. We're getting that from, uh, uh, from the engineer's office. Every time it's placed, we get those downloads, we get those charts, those graphs, that data and we're actually using that data too. We get traffic counts, we get speeds, median averages, we're getting all of that data too. And so, uh, next, the, the signs are being moved, uh, for a water hawks event and so we're going to pay attention to go over a road and, and the, the traffic counts and the data on that road as well. So the information that we're gathering is going to make us more effective and more, uh, more efficient with, with how we do traffic enforcement as well, so we're appreciative of that partnership too.
Appreciate the safety improvements though.
No, it's working well.
For residents, that's great.
I know I had, one of the supervisors had received the complaint and so I really appreciate the two of you working together and working with the Hessis to come up with this viable solution and it's just a.
I think the proof's in the pudding for this one. The picture tells a thousand words, you know, with, with what it actually looked like. And every shift, every day, we were out there and, and drove by it and, and made sure that, I think the Trap Shooting Association will tell you the same thing.
I don't recall ever getting.
I came in on Monday morning, I said, "What the heck happened on Saturday?" And they said, "Some guy just didn't stop at the stop sign and got ran into." But, uh, but otherwise, yeah, we didn't have any incidents, no issues, no problems whatsoever.
Well, and it's good that residents bother to contact us. I think sometimes they don't and haven't maybe crazily.
Well, Hessis been out there a while, if it's one I know.
But it sounded like there were several incidents, I think, just at this particular event that brought.
Kathy, I did have a question on the, uh, there's a call to courier, Sunday's paper on the Cedar Wapsie Bridge. Um, why isn't any work being done? They said the last time work was done was in March and they've used up twelve or fifteen percent of their working days already.
Yeah, so I reported on that last week, that they've, PCI is our prime contractor on that project. They've used approximately twenty-two or twenty-four percent of the working days. There is work, the, uh, trees had to be felled by April first, that's the deadline, so that the bats do not roost in the trees. Those were all felled, they laid there for many weeks and, and, uh, subcontractor came back, mm, probably two or three weeks ago now, and they've been chipping and mulching. It's, it's a lot, it's all cleaned up now, it's been mowed. We're ready for, uh, actually. We're ready for actual bridge work to start. PCI, as you know, they're very busy on the Highway 63 through town here, as well as the Viking Road intersection project. So, we don't have much leverage to get them to come and work on this project.
Well, it's a big project for us.
It is.
It's a big project.
We have liquidated damages associated.
What, what's the completion date on that?
It's 240 working days.
240.
So, we're, we were estimating, depends on what they get done in the winters, the coming winter.
Okay.
Next year, late next summer, perhaps. But we are on top of it, we are reporting to the DOT. We just have very little leverage at this point to entice them to come to this project.
I'm sure they're watching as closely as we are as well.
Yeah.
I'll say somebody else, I mean, the state's giving them a half million dollar bonus to finish Highway 63 early, so that's what we're up against.
And we want that too.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item six, minutes approved for July 16, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item seven is a consent agenda that will be made with a single resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Drilka.
Yes.
Yes.
Item eight, report. This is an update from Ben Deli Gardell, Doing Business Urban Services in regards to Washburn Sanitary Service. Morning.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Just updating for June, Washburn, 2019. We had a pre-routine month of monitoring lagoon cell levels and the flow to the lagoon. We did complete our equalization of the lagoon cells on June 12th. Plated the MOR, submitted that to the DNR, and that was for May 2019. Did a quarterly influence sample as required, we do that every three months, just break it down. I usually do the, you know, around the last of the month because I do the, the effluent sampling during the spring and fall, so I try and kind of break those up. Air release valves, there are seven in town and two between the lagoon and the river that we flush and clean out, just basically so air can be released from the system if it were to, to get in there. So, those have a lot of grit and solids inside those. We mow the lagoon, June 8th and 20th. We sprayed the banks and the fence line twice. Don't have the date on those, but they were about 10 days apart. Like to see how much green we can get rid of on the banks where we can't mow. So, it also helps with rodents, keep rodents and wildlife out of there. Property maintenance, we just like to keep everything mowed down. So, we did a little bit of rodent control, there was fox burrowing for striping gopher on the west bank and the north bank on the lagoon. Just trying to keep those off the banks. We, if they're out in the field, we don't really mess with them, but if they're getting into the infrastructure of the banks, we try to protect that. We had six service calls in June. We had another month of high number of locates, we had 15. And I think about seven of those were from the utility that came through on Folk Road. Between the poor road and Washburn Road, there's a power line coming through there. They called frequently for locates, there was multiple different contractors that were responsible for that, so they have to call their own locates in. We located it probably three or four times during the month, but we do have to keep those fresh. They're down in a ditch that's not mowed, so using stakes and ribbon and all that good stuff, but we just want to make sure that our utilities don't get hit, so. One thing that did happen here July 2nd is that we were not getting a reading on our flow meter. So, we entered the manhole and there was a compromised piece of the pipe where the flow meter's at. There's a flow meter that goes around the pipe and wires that come up into a module. That module sends a signal to the meter readout. So, there was sewage inside that meter. I'm currently not getting a readout. So, I've contacted the supplier, they're talking to the manufacturer of the, the flow meter. We're going to be getting that flow meter out of there for the end of this week. I was hoping to get a new flow meter in place so that I don't have to report zero flow for the entire month of July, which is not really a huge deal. We would obviously need to know what our flow is, but our remedy is that the manufacturer wants to look at why this flow meter failed before they give us a new unit. So, I was hoping that they would be covered under warranty, but their warranty's one year and this has been in there for three years. So, I'm trying to find the least expensive route, but it may cost us between $1,500 to $3,000 to get this one out replaced. But they want to give us a replacement that's going to work longevity wise for this application. I'm not sure if there's a reason that it failed, but when they look at it, they'll give me the results and give us a direction to go. So, in the meantime, I'm going to be reporting zero flow to the DNR.
What was the cost?
Around $1,500 to $3,000. I really have no idea. By the time I get down in the manhole and get it to them and with their, they're not going to charge me to test it, but they want to know what to give me in return. I don't know what that's going to cost exactly, but just a very rough estimate of that. So, that's basically all I have for now. You got any questions?
Board, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You. Okay, moving on to item nine, this is contracts and agreements. This is resolution to correct the board's record for an action item. Basically, we approved the contract, I believe back in December of last year. I signed the contract and we didn't have approval for that. So, basically, that's what we're doing today. Is that correct, Cathy?
That's correct.
So.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions, Cathy, anymore?
No, it was just an oversight on my part that we didn't get it on.
What I talked to you about the other day, I'll get back with you on that. Maybe we can combine them. Okay, then, roll call, please. Do we have motion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Drilka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 10, other business. This is a motion that the request for purchase capital equipment submitted by Kim Vider, IT Director, be approved, dollar amount $12,913.84.
Move to approve.
Second.
Kim, anything? I've seen a memo on this, you have anything else?
No, it's a budgeted item.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item B is a motion to request for purchase capital equipment. This one's for $7,651.38.
Move to approve.
Anything on this, Kim?
It's for the tax of construction.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item C is a resolution to tax sale certificate assignment for a vacant lot. It's got the parcel number listed there, located in Waterloo. Recertive Iowa Code 446.31, the code of Iowa, be approved and certificate of purchase tax sale be assigned to the city of Waterloo. Rita sent a memo over pertaining to this, and I believe this one and the next one, and it's on some properties, is that where they're building those Hawkeye homes?
Yes.
So, these are a couple lots in line there, is all that is.
Yes, the parcel is, Mr. Zellerfer has been working with Hawkeye Community College on this. And so, it's just basically an assignment of that certificate from Blackhawk County to the city. And there is a large amount of money due on the taxes since 2005, but a large percentage of it is special assessments. So, the city has been maintaining this property for a length of time. So, that's why Mr. Zellerfer has requested that there would be no exchange of funds. I'm not asking for abatement or compromise of the actual funds, because if there would be a redemption, that money would still be due to be paid.
Sure.
Move to approve.
Second.
City Attorney, got anything you wanted to add or pretty straightforward?
Chairman, I just want to ask Pete if he has any concern about me voting on this.
Oh, no, I do not.
We're not turning it over to you, are you?
No.
Do you have any concern?
Okay, then, I do have motion second. Let's get a roll call, please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Drilka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. And item D is a resolution that the compromise offered amount of zero, but the city of Waterloo on taxes is special assessments for the parcel listed there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Drilka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, everybody's welcome to stick around, we have a work session. It's update on restoring county secondary roads presented by Cathy Nicholas, county engineer, so. Just rest real quick. Three minutes. I think everybody called.
Oh, I know you.
Hey. You're such a great interviewer.
I can't give you too much work.
I really do. I'm there, God. Yeah, I understand, you told me. Yeah. So, try and do as a bridge then. Do something. Yeah, we'll put a limit on this contract. You can, I should have it ready for your next couple of days, I worked on it yesterday.
He's so used to that, that.
We'll have it ready. Thanks. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one, Greg.
You later, Pete.
Does he? Because he's probably got.
I don't want to call him on that because I'm concerned with your vote.
Hmm. Well, maybe he's bidding on stuff or whatever. Maybe all the projects.
Driving all the time.
Yeah, then he's getting on. He's getting on.
Yeah.
He's going to say.
He was.
Okay, Cathy Nicholas, county engineer. So, I wanted to give you an update on how we are restoring our roads this year. We've, there was a lot of discussion earlier this year about the poor conditions that the roads were in, particularly in the spring and then the early summer. As you know, we do not have a finance director right now. Normally, we would be talking to this person and inferring with them about how best to proceed. We may be overrunning the budget that we just submitted. We, we didn't anticipate a lot of some of this work that we are doing or would like to do, so I just want to keep you informed that our costs may go up in what we're doing, how we're spending the money, the extra money. So, currently, the status of the gravel road system, we are much better off than we were in March and April, for example. However, as you know, as has been discussed earlier this morning, we are still having rain events more than what is considered normal. And we are still seeing soft spots, frost boils, black patches of dirt coming up out of the gravel road system. We are trying, we are repairing those as best we can. However, we do think that we are going to be going into the fall, into frost, possibly the winter, with some of these still existing on the road system.
And that's a first, right, Cathy? We've not had that in many years anyway, to go into the winter with those spots?
I would say this widespread, definitely. We may have had one or two spots in the past, but in general, we've been able to patch things up, cover areas with rock. But this year, it just hasn't been as effective due to all the continuing rains.
Thank you.
So, what we've been doing about it on the gravel road system is placing spot rock like we normally do. That's where we, in some locations, we may go and core out, remove, excavate out a portion of that native material. We usually don't do that, in some of the worst spots, we're able to do that. We place rock, we call that spot rocking. Typically, we're doing that in the early spring, right after the frost is leaving the ground, as it's leaving the ground, we'll be placing the spot rock. Normally, that's done in April. Some years, we're able to start that work in March. This year, we were still doing it in early July. In fact, we're still doing it in some locations, still placing spot rock in soft areas. However, as you know, I've talked to you about this in the past, our gravel road system is made of limestone and dolomites. Those, those rocks decompose after a certain number of years. Traffic is traveling on these rocks, the climate affects the rocks, they just degrade over time. We need to be replacing that rock on a three to four year cycle to, to keep up with that degradation of the rock. And so, again, as you know, we have nine greater districts, they have approximately 60 to 80 miles in each district. They have a certain number of miles they need to be replacing every year. 20 miles per year is ideal, 15 miles per year is what we would like to get accomplished this year. Excuse me. We do normally replace 300 tons of rock per mile. That's our mile rock tonnage that we place. Some roads need mile rock every year. Grundy Road is one of those roads, and we, I've discussed that with you. That's one of the largest reasons we need, we would like to resurface it. We just completed placing mile rock on Grundy Road again. We've been doing this every year now for the last four years. We paid a contract hauler to haul that rock. We just finished it at a cost of about $40,000. Here's some photos that were taken approximately three weeks ago, and you can see that we still have, the day after it was placed, it still looks like there's no rock in some places. There's just, that's our heaviest volume of traffic in the county on the gravel road system. And it's definitely showing it. So, as I've said, we're, we will prob, we are not able to place 15 miles of mile rock ourselves. We just don't have enough time left in the season before winter hits us. We are proposing to hire contract rock haulers. We've contracted with basic materials, they find the truck drivers for us. Wayne's given them a list of roads that we want re-rocked. We're proposing to have them do four districts, and our own crews would do the remaining five districts, the extra miles. This will cost approximately $55,000. So, this is unbudgeted money from our professional services line item. And I've also told you how the motor grader operators and the dump truck drivers, those employees are working nine and a half hours, Monday through Thursday, and an eight hour day on Friday. So, we are able, we are working ourselves to do, to get this rock placed, but we're just not able to do all of it with our own forces. Another one of the issues that's common with frost boils is on our seal coat roads. Two years ago, we opted to stop seal coating with county forces, and we hired a contractor. This year's contract was already signed with Blacktop Services of Humboldt, Iowa for That was signed back in March. Then, we had springs, many of those frost boils were under the seal coats, they heaved up, traffic drove over those soft spots. They create conditions very similar to what's seen in the photo. So, now, we, we have repaired those areas, many of them where we, we removed that material that's degraded there, we, we removed that with our own forces and then we placed rock, and then we re-seal coat over that. We need to do some shuffling of that contract, and we will put a double seal coat on a few locations, and those costs will have gone up by approximately $5,000 to that contract is what we're anticipating currently. Waters Road is a very specific case. This is west of Hudson, between the Hudson City limits and Holmes Road. It's approximately 1,300 feet long and it's in the floodway. Those trees in the background, that's Blackhawk Creek. So, it overtops nearly every year, it comes out of its banks and goes over Waters Road. Waters Road gets flooded for several days at a time. We've re-seal coated that road 12 times out of the last 16 years. I feel like maybe we should be doing something different to save money in the long run. Let's put a hot mixed asphalt down rather than seal coat this again. So, we would, I would like to put hot mixed asphalt down on that 1,300 feet. So, we would mill out the existing material and then place three inches of asphalt, and we're estimating that would cost approximately $80,000. And that would also come out of the professional services line item. Another special case is Simon's Road. And this is a road that is directly north of Dunkerton Road, so it's just north of the airport, and it goes to Mount Vernon Road, goes north to Mount Vernon Road. It has 300. And it goes to Mount Vernon Road, goes north to Mount Vernon Road. It has three hundred and twenty vehicles per day, which is our second. Once you omit Grundy Road, it's the next busiest gravel road in the county. If you're familiar with that area of the county, A1 Vacation Land is on that road approximately a quarter of a mile. That is in the city limits of Cedar Falls. The residents out there, the A1 Vacation Land employees, the owner, they have been requesting that the city of Cedar Falls paved that portion for a number of years. We've been hearing that. We have a maintenance agreement with the city of Cedar Falls to maintain this portion of Simon's Road, or this, this Simon's Road in its entirety. We committed to them two years ago, the city of Cedar Falls, that we would seal coat Simon's Road in our 2020 contract. However, you can see by the photos here that I believe this was in March, we had a, a very large frost boil there and had to go and do a repair. We placed seven dump truck loads of rock there and repaired it. However, I, we still are in need of making our commitment to the city of Cedar Falls, and I would like to seal coat it next year. So to prevent another frost boil, if that were to happen, I would like to put a, a geo grid down and place some rock on top of that. So if a frost boil does come back, we're, we're cushioning that, providing a a stress relieving layer from perhaps a frost boil in that area. So it wouldn't destroy the seal coat. So I'd, I would like to do that repair before we re-seal coat it next year. And we're estimating that would cost twenty thousand dollars for the rock and the geo grid. And then the labor to do that, because we would be hiring a contractor to do that work. Any questions so far? A few more slides here. We've had several residents or farmers approach us about improving the drainage, and we all know that better drainage on our gravel road system would be a tremendous help. That's something we just don't have. The gravel roads were never built with any, with very limited means of conveying the water off the road, getting it away from the road. We would like to install a subdrain system, a subdrain tile down the middle of the road in two or three test locations. We, I've had a farmer give us a location that has had numerous frost boils over the year. He has even indicated he may be willing to participate with us in a subdrain in, in this location. His area is down in the south, the southeast portion of the county. So if we, this would not be work we can do ourselves. We would have to hire a tile contractor most likely. If we can find someone to do that work and try these two or three test sections, I'd like to do that, and those would probably be six to eight thousand dollars a location, each location. If we can't get it done this year, then we'll probably just put in our local construction budget for FY21 to, to do some of these drainage areas improvements. And in summary, these are the costs that I've talked to you about. We're estimating that we'll overrun approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And it would be primarily to our professional services line item, because we just don't have the time to do this extra work. We'll have to hire others. Do you have any questions for myself, or, or Wayne's here? He can give you other information as well.
Well, you know, as I indicated in the email earlier, obviously, we know we had a rough winter. We're not the only county.
Yep.
They're all dealing with the same situation. And we don't know if this is the norm, or if it's going to be different each year. So you just deal with what you've got. Um, you're only a month into your new fiscal budget, so I'm not concerned. We do two budget amendments a year, usually one in the fall, one in the spring. Um, as an overseer of your budget, I'd like you to uh, not only, you come up with the numbers for the board and stuff, but also look within your budget if there's possibilities of moving money from one area to the other on some of the less important areas and trying to balance some of that out. Um, obviously, we'll be addressing this for sure, probably at, um, at, uh, budget amendment, uh, if and when that comes. And we do that every year. Um, so you made the board aware of it. I'd just like to have you look within your own budget and see if you can move some monies around. Um, as far as some of these new programs that weren't talked about during budgets, those will have to come back to the board, because we can't approve anything today. This is just a workshop. So some of those new projects, I think you're going to have to bring back to the board for approval. Uh, either that or, yeah, this last one, you said you might wait until twenty, uh, this year, twenty-one. So it, it's, it's good information, but, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do. My fear is you're going to be working for the next two or three months. You're going to go right into the fall again and winter. You're going to start from scratch. All that rock's going to be pushed off again or swabbled up. So I think we've got to use a little common sense in some of the areas. A lot of these pictures were from March, you said?
About half of them, the, uh, the Grundy Road ones were just recent, right after we got the rocking done.
Because it appears that we're starting to hit a little bit of a dry spell. That should help out drastically. Um, so, you know, you just have to deal with what we have to and, and what we get done, we get done. And, and, you know, you, you could spend two billion dollars out there, but is that going to fix anything? Probably not. Um, hopefully, we won't have to go through another winter like that, but who knows? But again, all the other counties are going through the same thing, or most of them. So I'm just surprised some of those roads still have that boil in them, you know?
Yeah, the, the, these photos were taken on Levercy Road last week, so.
But we, we've got how many miles of gravel road?
Five hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have areas that need attention, but you just, you're not going to get to all of them, you know, the best we can. We've got the equipment. We've invested in equipment. We've got the manpower. Just have to do what you can, and, and hopefully, that's the best, and maybe we'll get lucky and have a soft winter this year, but you never know. And we've had some.
Oh, oh, yeah, definitely.
Where you were running an excess budget, so I'm not too concerned. Well, we're aware of it. The board's aware of what you're doing. And, um, hopefully, it won't be too much of a sticker shock uh, when we come into, uh, any future budget amendments.
Kathy, I'd be curious on some of the proposals that you did make, though, on those. Were there some of those, if you looked at prioritizing, or some that you think would be beneficial? Um, to, I said, going into the year. I mean, obviously, I know you and your staff have looked at these and think they all would be beneficial. So if we could do them all now, um, it would, you know, probably improve those areas, at least going into the winter and helping. Um, we don't know what kind of winter we'll have, obviously, so that's like Tom said, every year. But, um, we certainly know how bad the roads were this one, so do they strengthen or impact some of those decisions you would make on those roads?
For example, the, the improvements to Simon's Road, I really would like to seal coat that next year, because like I said, I committed to Cedar Falls, that we would seal coat it this year. We're very leery to seal coat that portion where the large soft spot was without, um, trying to improve it, trying to make it frost boil proof. And so the time to do that would be now, so it's sitting through the winter. And then next year, when it comes time to seal coat it, we would then be able to place the seal coat.
And the rock hauling, I'm sure, like I say, from a resident's perspective, that's probably where they're looking to see improvements made and watching the roads carefully, because some of those are in such need.
Yes, I mean, we're having people call probably every day, still, that they need rock on their road, so.
See, the thing they don't understand too, Linda, sometimes the cure isn't rock.
Oh, no, I know that.
We can dump load after load. I mean, that, that, that doesn't cure it. And that's all they think, is dump some rock on there.
No, I mean.
I personally haven't had any calls for quite a while. You guys are still getting calls.
Yeah, our call's less than, obviously.
Yeah, I, I really haven't heard. You know, at one time there, it was going nuts, but that's when it was at its peak.
But I'm not relying on the residents to tell me how bad they are.
No, but I'm saying their solution is rock.
But I'm relying on staff to say the same, what's so bad or not.
Right, if we, if we don't hire contract rock haulers, then we'll only get, some districts will only have ton miles of rock.
Yeah.
And then we will be behind on the rock, which affects.
Where we like to be every year, or where we strive to be every year. So they'll go into the year at a deficit, quite honestly, then next year is what happens. And we won't have the ways to make it up, because we still have the same staff, the same resources to get it.
Right, and if we don't have that rock, then that, that's less insurance for the coming winter, the, the next spring for those frost boils.
But you, you remember too, when the board first started receiving gas tax money, a good portion of that went to additional rock.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, over two hundred thousand dollars. So we've even increased that before this situation even evolved, so.
I, I think that with the four districts contracted, that's still only hitting the fifteen hour mark, not the average twenty mile mark that we used to strive for each year, right?
Correct.
And so, um, and so this isn't, I mean, it's, it's all delayed because of this awful winter, but this would be the normal maintenance we'd be doing every year that we're, um, even with the contract, going to fall short of where we'd like to be.
Right, if we can get the fifteen miles hauled, then that will be, the, the past few years, haven't we?
Past few years, we've done twenty miles of ground crater. But this, we're just running out of time. We're going to, the best we can do is fifteen, that's what's helped from the county.
If, if we doubled that contract rock hauling, would we hit the twenty? Or is that, are there even the folks to contract with in the community?
Yeah.
There are, and you're looking at a lot of money.
So realistically, you're trying to keep the cost down and still do what?
Right, do which roads need.
Actually, that number is something that the board has increased over the years. When I came on here, it was half that number. That was expected to be completed any year. It wasn't even close to fifteen. And, uh, the board in the last twelve years have increased that through various spending methods, whether it be through local option sales tax or bonding, and, because I think your monies that you receive, if I recall back then, was cover about seven miles a, a year or something of reconstruction. And we've really boosted that up to that fifteen and twenty mile mark. We were losing ground all the time back when I first got here.
The past twenty-five years I have been here, we've always tried to get to twenty, but we've never accomplished it because of floods and.
Well, you didn't have funding for it either. I mean, it takes rather than road use and farm to market, it takes extra money.
So I think one of these things that I definitely think we need to see done this year is the experimenting with the drainage, um, because I'd rather know, I mean, so we won't have the final results maybe until by the, by March thirtieth, when the budget's due, but it'd be nice to have an example of whether that's a solution going forward, uh, sooner than later. So I'd like to see that experiment happen for sure this year.
Take one of the bad areas and possibly, uh, that would be a good place to try.
Probably dunk in two or three spots in the thousands of frost boils, I mean.
Yeah, and it may give you an idea if it'll work in areas that weren't quite as bad, so, but I guess you won't know until you try, so.
Have you had some discussion, Kathy, on the Simmons, Simmons or Simon's Road, uh, with the city of Cedar Falls? Have you had some conversations with them?
I talked to, uh, the developmental director a few weeks ago, and she had told me that the residents in the Timberidge area, they're, they're the subdivision that's just to the west of Simon's, between Simon's Road and two eighteen. There's approximately fifteen to twenty homes in there. They generate a lot of the traffic. So that, those people are calling and um, particularly on behalf of A1 Vacation Land, is the way I understand it, saying, you need to get this seal coated so that people can come to this business. Uh, you, it's only business in the city that doesn't have a paved road, so I did talk with her recently and told her that we, we were planning to seal coat it this year in our fiscal year 2020 contract, but just due to this big blow up, we felt that wasn't approved and a good use of our money. We would try and get it done next year. So I have talked to her recently.
Okay.
But look at what type of road, or what type of business that road is servicing. That probably has something to do with it, with travel trailers and fifth wheels and all that. It's on, I'm assuming that's the road they're using, aren't they?
Right, it's, it's probably how many feet off of Dunkerton is it?
And big trucks pulling them and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you leave Dunkerton Road and go a thousand feet, and they're to the west of Simon's.
I don't recall hearing from them before in the past, have we?
Uh, we've heard from that owner many times over the years about improving the road to the, at least to the business and.
She's been out there about twenty years, I think.
On Grundy Road?
Yes.
First, there's, there hasn't been any indication from Grundy County that they're backing away from this deal since our work session that we had?
Not that I've heard.
Because it's, I mean, we've got to pay back, because it's taking up too much of our time, um, and too many resources every year. And so I, I wonder, is there, and I hate to see us have to keep dumping resources into it, since we're going to be hopefully re-hauling it, or we, or paving it, um, shortly. Uh, I was wondering, is there anything we can do to try and limit truck traffic on that? I know that, I mean, target distribution. Why are you driving on this gravel road? You have no reason to do it. I hope you're listening. But, um, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it just doesn't make sense.
I.
All my favorite things.
Yes, that, that is, the majority of the traffic is generated right around that area, agricultural traffic. It's twenty-four, seven. It's three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
It's traveled as much as it is. It'd be hard to, yeah, reduce, I think, anything being like that, too.
Okay.
So your time limit to do any of these things, though, is fairly immediate, where we.
The rock hauling, we've, we've started the rock hauling. We have to get this rock hauled, or we're going to run out of time, like Wayne said. The, uh, we will put together some more information on Simon's Road and Waters Road, and I guess come back to you with an agenda item for those.
I thought you were going to do Simmons Road in FY21.
I would like to do this improvement this year so that we can seal coat it next year.
But are you going to have time to do all this improvements with the other?
Well, that's what we're saying. We have to hire people to do this work. We, we, we just don't have time. We, we don't have enough staff and time to get some of these smaller projects done.
Yeah, you're running out of time, obviously.
Yeah.
I'd like to see an agenda item on all those, as well as the drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, and like you said, an update's on all of it, probably, I think, too, when you're talking about some of it. I still like the updates on where you're at and how it's moving and not moving, I guess, because of weather and stuff, too. So I appreciate that. So thank you. And, and, yeah, we can do agenda items, though, and all.
Sure, we just have to be smart. You don't have an unlimited budget here. And we've got a lot of repair that has to take place, so let's just.
We can.
I think she has a very good plan right now, and I, and I think that we can move on it. And, um, you gotta, I don't know what it costs from us hiring somebody else to do it compared to what we can do it for.
Right, right now, we have every truck that we have on.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, what would it cost if we did it in-house compared to hiring somebody to do it outsource?
And our preference, obviously, would be to do it in-house, if we just can.
Right, so like I told you, that our, our truck drivers and our motor grader operators, they're working nine and a half hours Monday through Thursday and eight hours on Friday. Obviously, we have to buy the rock, no matter who's placing it. The fifty-five thousand is, is really just labor and the usage of someone else's truck. So we can give you, I think we have given you an overtime number before. I, I just don't remember what it is. We could come back to you with that information or email.
I'd be honest with you, probably periodic updates is all the board's going to need. That way, there won't be sticker shell shock when we see it at amendment time or something.
I, well, yeah, updates for sure. Like Kathy usually does pretty good updates for us, I think, too, but I think as far as the items.
I think the key of the work session today was for her to kind of notify, which I think we all kind of knew that anyway. we all kind of knew that anyway. I'm not really that concerned a month into the new budget, so...
Well, I think it's just preventative measures we're looking at.
I understand that, but I tell you what, three months from now, you're going to start it all back over again, possibly.
Well, should, no, next spring, I guess we'll find out, I guess I'm thinking, or winter, we'll see, but...
Winter?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, has anybody else got anything? Kathy?
No, thank you for your time.
But I'm just, I'm meaning, if there were any of those items that we wanted on the agenda...
Yeah, sure, I mean, like I said, it's, you know, we want to make sure we get done what we're capable of getting done, and I would imagine she's going to put a priority on a list of what she thinks should be done, and what the board needs to approve, and that would be proper to do it that way.
Yeah, but it was just a timeline.
And the cost.
Running up against it, yeah.
Yeah, and just kind of see what we want to spend, too, I mean, you know, you want to spend a million dollars, we can do anything you want.
Well, we're only at $185,000.
I know, I know.
That's our annual rock budget, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, good information, Kathy, and we'll just stay the course.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Board's aware of everything, so...
Well, I think that was important, part of it, is like, we weren't all aware of the cost in the projects, maybe, and all the different things they were proposing, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Okay, wrapping up then, is there any reports from the board at this time?
I'll just report, later this week, we have our, our next meeting of the Blackhawk County Complete Count Committee for the census. As I reported previously, due to the fact that there is no funding, and seemingly no coordination from the federal government at this point, we'll be, I'll be taking up the social media efforts, so we'll be unveiling that to you all next week, and I expect that everybody who'll hear will be our biggest Instagram follower, and support those efforts.
We'll share your message, yes.
Security discussions are continuing.
I see the emails, and, have you guys met yet?
We're going to meet next week.
Very good. Linda?
Yeah.
Okay, accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.